Okay, good.
Yeah.
Mark was only kidding about the meal and the silence.
Sorry.
He had a clock ticking there.
I don't know, well you could tell he's cheating.
I wouldn't have much of a choice on that.
Huh?
Eh? It would sound like it's many choices, huh?
No.
Uh, fourteen.
Could crack.
Oh, is that the one you guys read the other day?
No question.
Yeah.
I think so.
Uh, Harvey Hill?
Yeah.
I think so, yeah.
At the right time? At the right time?
Five fifty-nine.
Eh?
Five fifty-nine, close enough.
Pretty damn close.
Damn close. Yep, there we go.
There we go.
Okay, official. To call the meeting to order, please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance. The first thing is gonna be public participation. Is anybody that wants to make a comment to the board?
I do, uh, I know, I've seen the advertisement on TV about McDonald's situation. And I've heard all kinds of stories going around about McDonald's. I'm just gonna talk a little bit on some about McDonald's, but the only thing on the inside, I used to go in there and socialize, I'd probably at least enjoy myself, but now you don't have that around anymore because of that drive-through right now. But I like to see that come back once they get that rebuilt all over again later on. Because if you get it through McDonald's headquarters, which would be a good thing, so I thought I'd bring it up tonight.
The video was sent to McDonald's headquarters, correct?
Yes.
So, that's the thing I have tonight.
It was well put together.
Put together.
Thanks, Paul.
Thank you, Paul.
Thank you.
Is there anybody else that wants to address the board at this time? Hearing none, we'll move on. First article is to consider other business and adjustments to the agenda. Are there any adjustments that we have to make to the agenda?
The only thing I would have, Kevin, our Public Works Director submitted, and you have a copy of that, if you vote for plow truck, is something that you guys had, you had kind of put it out there at our last meeting. And the folks are interested in seeing something, so you did provide that to us. And, you know, whether it's informational at this point, or we want to discuss it, I guess you guys would decide if you want to add it to the agenda.
Yep, does Kevin want to speak now, or? You want to speak now, or on this issue?
It's up to you, if you want to wait till it's my turn for.
Board in agreement?
I think we should, yeah.
Yep. Okay, Kevin.
I know the last time we were here, we had talked about the plow truck for up at the lake, and I was asked to get a quote. So I put a little packet together on what it would cost for the truck and the setup. Since we met the last time, the one that usually plows at the lake has been taken off because of the frame and the cab is really, so we've stepped it down into town. And the one that used to do the snow rack that was retired from Guyanese Road will now be plowing in the lake to get by this year. To try to get, you know, to get to the season. We talked to Dable and Holton, and it's a minimum of one year out if we decide to order one. So if we order one now, we'll be lucky to get it next fall. My recommendation is, I think that we should seriously look at that because the plow that we put back on there is twenty, twenty-two years old, and it plowed for about seventeen years. And that one too is also on its last link, that's why we retired it to the snow rack. Our equipment is, some of it is, is running. And I hate to put it back on the plow because we're gonna, we're gonna, you know what I mean, eat up the rest of its life. Plowing still.
Quick question.
Yes.
Gary, do we have a, do we have a balance of a reserve account for them for vehicles like that, or?
We have, at the top of my head there, we do have monies that we put into reserve for equipment. And then we also put, the proceeds from the land sale of Pitt in Frenchville went into their Public Works Reserve account for equipment. So off the top of my head, I don't have that balance. But it's right in the annual town report, I believe. So, if you want to make a quick reference to it.
I'd hate to destroy that fund entirely, if we can take some of it out of that fund and the rest out of somewhere else, just to.
Well, I, I would, I would recommend a five-year lease.
Yeah.
On it.
Yeah.
The finance charge isn't, isn't not that much that I think it, you know. You can certainly pay the first payment out of the, out of, out of reserves, you know, if you don't want to put in a budget, but I would recommend, that's what we've been doing with Public Works for a minute.
Right.
Uh, leasing, uh, leasing it out at five-year terms, we can go three or five.
So, um, so with this, one-year turnaround, we'd only be paying that first lease payment when we get it delivered more probably, or?
Yeah, yeah, on lease, uh, finance, you pay the first payment upfront.
Well, I'll make a motion to purchase the vehicle in question here on lease for two hundred ten thousand three hundred seventy-seven.
And please note there that, and this quote is, they're not, they're not even wanting to stand by their quote here.
Right, yeah.
That's today's pricing, and nobody wants to even solidify, uh, lock in the price for.
So I'll modify my, I meant my motion then to not include the, the grand total, just.
Just get the truck on order.
Yep.
I'll, I'll second that, I, lacking any other way, there's no way to get any commitment on a number, so what are you gonna do outside of that? I don't know if there was much of an option, so.
Kevin, is it, is the question, is it possible to get, now the quote, they were not willing to lock in, it was Daimler, right?
Yes.
They wasn't willing to lock in, could you lock in, could you ask them if they can lock in the box and the plow price?
What happens is they can't do that because they said the steel has gone up forty percent since last year and it's climbing all the time. So what I could do is if they authorize that, I can have Scott call Dable Holton tomorrow to see if we can come up with some kind of agreement to.
Lock in a price?
Lock in a price, or it wouldn't exceed a certain amount.
Right.
Because if, like I said, everything keeps going up, you know. We'll do our best.
And it's no surprise.
Did you have other, other quotes?
Nope, what happens in the past, uh, we, we, we used to use the forty-eight, forty-nine hundred Western Stars. The last one we bought was a forty-seven hundred. And we've had nothing but problems with it. They've downsized the frame size, the motor, the transmission. And we've had it for five years, and we've put a lot of money in their repairs. Sometimes going smaller is not better. So I recommend that we stick to what we had in the past, and those have been great trucks for us. They're still going, and they're twenty and twenty-two years old, so.
Is that assembled at Dable Holton? The box and the plow and all that?
That's done over at Viking Downstate.
Okay. I was thinking maybe if you could get part of it ahead of time and.
Yeah.
All right.
Okay. Any more questions?
We're gonna have trouble trying to keep that reserve account up for him.
I know.
It's gonna be.
You know, it's, uh.
Well, I mean, it's what, we're using it for that purpose, I mean.
Yeah, I mean, it's for, just for recognition if anything else comes up. Because this, this will be an unknown, really.
Snow removal is quite important.
Absolutely.
Well, you'd have a snow blower.
Yeah, I'm not doing mainstream. Do we have a motion, you have a second, any more discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor of the motion? Those against, motion carries.
Thank you.
Is that it, Kevin?
Yeah.
Thank you.
So we're talking a year down the road?
Next, late summer, early next fall, a minimum.
Yeah, even before COVID and the supply chain issues had, you know, commonplace now, it was a six to nine mile delivery time on these, on these vehicles.
So it's not a significant delay from normal?
No.
It isn't?
Okay, we'll move on to Article Two, is to consider the board minutes for August eighteen.
Yeah.
Is a motion.
I make a motion to accept.
I'll second.
Motion by Jason, seconded by Chris, to approve the August eighteen minutes. Are there any omissions or corrections in the minutes? Hearing none, all those in favor of the motion for the minutes of August eighteen? Or, as against? Motion carries. Minutes for August twenty-four.
Can I make a motion, we accept August twenty-four and September two?
Same motion?
Yep, I second those.
Are there any omissions or corrections in the minutes? Hearing none, all those in favor of the motion? Those against, motion carries. Article Three, to consider treasurer's warrants. You have anything, Gary, for treasurer's warrants? They've all been signed?
I make a motion to accept.
Motion to accept, seconded by Chris. Are any discussions? Hearing none, all those in favor of the motion? Against, motion carries. Article Four, to consider proposal by Jason Houston for the community solar project.
So Jason was, uh, Jason's got some experience with solar, he's, he's got some affiliation with University of Maine. And he was at our last board meeting, the special board meeting with the solar companies, we're making a presentation, and he asked to make a presentation for you folks to consider. So with that said, Jason, just do your thing, and if you want me to click on the slides, just, just tell me, uh.
Sounds good, I appreciate it. Good evening, everybody, my name's Jay Houston, I recently moved to the area, I've been here for about a year and a half now. I plan to spend the rest of my life here, I love it, so I want to thank you guys for creating such a great place right off the bat. So, before I moved to Maine, I graduated college in Rochester, New York, focusing on solar thermal technology. I helped with the install of some large solar farms and also some off-grid farms. I live off-grid right now, completely off-grid, relying on solar and a propane backup, spent the winter here. So it is possible to live out here on solar and survive. So, I, how many of you guys have had a chance to read my entire proposal? So I transitioned that proposal a little bit to more, to adjust more, um, the farm to act as revenue for the town versus giving the residents of St. David that free energy for the ten thousand. So I'll run through the powers, uh, the PowerPoint, give you a better idea of my objectives. So, I always think this is a great way to start off, letting people know how efficient solar is. So a half a day of sunlight on the US can power the country for an entire year. So i- it's not a matter, i- if the sun creates enough energy, it's a matter if we harness it. So solar is definitely a great option. And especially up here, everywhere gets an average of five hours of sunlight a day. Germany has thirty percent less sunlight than the United States, they're the leader in solar energy in the world. So given the efficiency of solar panels and how much more efficient they most likely will become in the coming years, it's definitely a way to go in terms of renewable and sustainable energy. Next slide. So this was off my initial proposal, which was a solar farm specifically for the residents of St. David. So this solar farm is a lot bigger than the solar farm that I would propose for the town. You can keep the same size of the solar farm and then sell the excess energy to the residents at that discounted fifteen percent price and collect revenue on that every year to be distributed however the, the board or the town feels to be distributed, the buy-in and plow truck. Uh, depending on how big the farm is, will depend on how much the ROI would be. But I estimated with my project at ten thousand dollars per customer, there's three hundred and fifty-two customers in St. David. So on about one point five to two million dollars, within ten years, you get a three point five million dollar return on it. So you get, you know, about, you know, one point five to one point eight million dollars on, on that investment, just in ten years. I, I looked into this a lot more after I saw the other companies come in here, and I, I love what they're doing, I think solar is great. But I also think a twenty-year lease is a very long time, a lot can happen in twenty years. And it's quite possible that solar won't be the most efficient form of energy in twenty years. Not to mention, actually I'll get to it in other slides, so, um, you can go to the next slide here. So this talks about the size of the farm. I, I did, I worked with an engineer in the University of Maine system to establish a farm and draw up maps using Arc and Key V I S and Google Maps Pro. So the farm that I have designed would take up about two to three acres of land on a ready cleared hill. So it's a ready cleared, it's ready to go, it's south facing. And with an eye, an average of five hours of sunlight a day, the farm would create anywhere between seventy-six to ninety-one hundred kilowatt-hours a year per customer. Each customer in Maine on average only uses sixty-eight, sixty-four kilowatts a year. So we'd still have excess energy with the one point six-six kilowatts.
Good.
Yes, all right. So like I said before, every, every, uh, every point gets an average of five hours of sunlight a day. Current project would create three hundred and twenty megawatts annually, twenty-five seventy-four at eighty-five percent. So most, most solar panels are rated at, at eighty-five percent. That's for that fifteen to twenty-five year initial life cycle. So you get at a max of that life cycle, eighty-five percent. After that, it changes from solar panels, distributors and suppliers, but it's usually you use about, you use about a half a percent a year. So even after twenty or twenty-five years, you still have a good, you know, five to ten, maybe even fifteen years of producing energy from those panels. So, you know, a big goal of my project and why I'm working with the school is to create, to transition, not only transition into renewable energy, but create jobs and educate the community. That's my main goal of this entire project, is community development. I want the community to own their power and then get the revenue back from it, instead of paying somebody for twenty years for power. When you could have paid for that farm itself within ten years. Next slide, please. So this talks about the ten thousand dollars per customer. Each customer, so if we were to do, each household only needs an average of, like a five kilowatt system a year. Because you make twenty-five kilowatts a day then, with five hours of sunlight on average a year. That'll give you enough energy to power your home for the entire year. So the town facilities use seven hundred and sixty-seven megawatts. What, uh, what was the average pricing, was it one fifteen or one oh eight? Uh, annual pricing for the, uh, for the town?
Oh, you know, it's about a hundred and fifteen.
Okay, that's what I used. So at a hundred and fifteen thousand dollars a year, over twenty years on the leases that you'd be with them, you'd pay them two point three million dollars. Meanwhile, you can go to the next slide. So on my project, the town would get an ROI in thirteen years, but that's on my project without selling extra revenue or anything, and just selling the electricity for the fifteen percent cost. Not the hundred dollars a month, not the ten thousand dollars for each customer. That's a credit to credit with the consumers, you get a return on investment within thirteen years at the size of that project. Distribution of excess of energy by the farm can substantially lower it, twenty-five, I discussed that. And then next, uh, next slide, please, Gary. Right, so this is another thing, so, um, the Versant bills are increasing by twenty-five percent in the next five years anyway. So best case scenario, in five years, you're gonna be paying ten percent more for energy than you pay now anyway. This locks in a constant energy price for the life cycle of those panels. Right now, the average, there's a lot that goes into the, to the energy pricing, but the average energy price per kilowatt in Maine is fifteen point nine cents through Versant. So at fifteen point nine cents, I came up to about a hundred and fifteen, maybe a little bit over a hundred and fifteen when I did the math.
Do you have some other questions? So on the Versant, you have the delivery and the supply side rates, so if they're two combined, you make fifteen point nine.
Yes. Fifteen point nine cents, exactly. So, uh, on the next slide, I'll kind of elaborate on why that's important. So I'm working with the UMaine, I'm working with the engineering department. I have to do a regulatory analysis for my environmental regulations class, and he suggested to possibly look at municipal land to build a solar farm on, and I can help with the regulatory analysis. My location is great, but at the same time, you have that distribution charge. A location in town would be excellent because you can feed directly into the buildings when the solar panels are producing. So you completely negate that distribution charge, it's a one-on-one-off. And then, once the energy isn't producing, the inverter shuts off and shunts over to the, to the grid. So, I, I mean, there's a lot of area around here, I'm not that familiar with all the municipal land, but that's something that, that I'd like to discuss with the town if they were willing to, to have a solar project on the municipal land that the town could own and either charge the residents for that energy and collect their revenue or distribute it equally through taxes and stuff like that. And then this is where my initial solar farm was, um, is built. So that's at the top of the hill on John Drew Road. Also, John Drew Road doesn't have phase three wide wires, the hill coming up does. So that would be another difficult hurdle to overcome, I guess. But, you know, you have phase three wires all around.
On Boyer Road?
Yeah, on Boyer Road does, yeah. I'm about a mile off. So, um, but where I've worked with the Department of Labor, the State University of New York as well, to establish a apprenticeship program for solar, basing my apprenticeship program off the Oregon Apprenticeship Solar Program. I want people to establish a career, people who are interested to be able to establish a career in the renewable energy sector. I think that's really important, and every, uh, every company, every entity inside the government that, that's dealt with electricity is, is all on board about that. They say that's an area that's gonna need hundreds of thousands of workers within the next ten to fifteen years. And that's part of the reason we're having trouble transitioning into the renewable energy. Because we don't have enough people and enough installers to come and do it. And, you know, that's the beautiful thing about small towns like this. I mean, you have all the assets to actually build this farm, and you have the know-how to do it. I'd like for all the economic gains to be for the town versus companies from, from out of state. So, I mean, I just wanted to express my interest in this and kind of get your guys' input. If it's something you guys would be willing to let me look into before you make a decision on the other solar farms with the school. Discuss a possible location in town. You know, like I said, you're gonna get your return on investment with, at a, at a point five megawatts, you only need half a megawatt solar farm to create the seven hundred and sixty-seven megawatts you need. So, I mean, the price on that, if you just wanted to do specific to the municipal buildings, you're looking at less than a million dollars, all said and done. And that could include the connection, depending on how close it is. And you're gonna pay, uh, you know, over a million dollars in ten years in energy bills anyway to the solar farm. And I've been working with the technological school. I, I'm focused on being able to make the mountain systems on-site to involve the welding and metalworking department at the school there. And I have, uh, I have a call out to, um, what is it, Van Buren, gas and, is it electric, light and electric? So I have a call out to figure out exactly how everything is set up through them. But, um, the personage there on, uh, like, C-Board leave, COVID leave right now, so they told me he'd be back at the end of this week sometime.
Now, the setup would be in, in the town area, would that be considered an industrial site?
Well, i- it's dependent on how big you make it, so there's also different connection levels. So there's level one, level two, level three, and it's all dependent on how much, um, energy you're producing. Anything over twenty-five kilowatts would be, uh, a level two, and then every, anything over two, two megawatts would be a level three.
And yours is gonna be a what level?
Mine would be a level two at point five, and it would still be a level two at one point six-six megawatts. So it's more than enough power for the community. The big thing about changing the location to here in town is that you can cut out that distribution. And that's a, that's a large chunk of your bill, and if you're able to cut that out, you know, you save a lot of money yearly anyway. And then the town can still give the community and people in the community the, that fifteen percent discount on the Versant energy bill. Because with the one point six-six, you'd still have over two thousand megawatts to sell. That's two million times fifteen point nine cents per kilowatt a year.
Whose property is this right there?
That's my property, yeah.
Okay.
It doesn't look as flush as it does in, in the big photo.
Yeah.
It's all cleared and everything already.
I have a question for Gary. Would that require, like, a statement of approval for, like, a water district or sewer treatment plant?
Well.
The legislature gives us that permission to establish that, right?
Well, if you're gonna create a utility district, that would I, I would have to do some research on that, I have no, zero experience in that regard. So I don't want to make any comments.
Cost to management and stuff like that.
Yeah.
Yeah. I think that, I think that the town, you know, if they weren't supplying energy to anybody but themselves, they could set up some arrays, and I don't think it's, needs to be necessarily at the buildings where you can have an array somewheres and do net metering.
Right.
You know, and you see a lot of the farmers locally are doing that, you see these little arrays that are popping up and that's sort of, uh, net metering, so.
Well, there's a lot of reap benefits for small business owners to transition into renewable resources. So my initial plan was a nonprofit, so it made it kind of difficult to apply for grants. I'm working with the school to apply for grants through the National Science Foundation for the educational aspect of it. I mean, it's by no means a complete project, it's a lot to undertake, but I, I have the full support of the school. And I, at, at a minimum, I, I'd like just an opportunity to, to establish a, a plan. And I, I, at a minimum, I, I'd like just an opportunity to, to establish a, a plan for the town that is beneficial and uncountable in a way.
Jason?
Yeah.
How many people do you plan on hiring for this?
Uh, it's kinda dependent on the size of the farm.
Let's, let's, let's say, let's say you go to your max capacity. Let's say you're gonna do all three acres.
Okay.
Okay, how many, how many employees are you talking about?
About a hun- uh, fifty-two, a hundred and fifty maybe, depending. So, we, we do it in stages. So we come in and have a group come in and do the mounting brackets, then we come in and have a group do the solar panels.
No, I'm talking about year-round employment.
Year-round, so that's the nice thing about solar is there isn't any upkeep. For the most part, solar is you plug it in and you don't touch it. It's not mechanical energy.
You still need to clean the snow off in especially the winter time.
So as I, um, we're working with the technology department, so they'll be at a thirty-seven degree angle or forty-seven degree angle. So most of it, and they're black, um, mine are gonna be four by four, sixteen feet. So actually, um, one of the main things I've been working with the welders about is I know the other companies, they just have them on, um, mounts that don't move or anything. But there are mounts that move and they're not even mechanical. You just go in with the wrench and you kinda move it seasonally depending on the angle of the sun. But in terms of maintenance, there'd have to be oversight. Landscaping would be taken care of with goats. That's what they've used in the past, uh, because goats can get into the areas. The snow removal from the panels is not, um, as serious as a concern for me right now. Um, like the other companies said, they were just gonna leave the snow on the panels during the winter anyway. And I just hope that the rest of the year made up for that, correct?
Yeah, I'm not sure. I think they, they expect that the panels do shed their snow.
Yeah.
Eventually.
But for the most part, they will. They shed a lot of the, I mean, it's black, so it collects that sun all day and it gets really hot, slides right off. So, but that, you know, thank you for asking, cause that was, was a good point about the, uh, the mounting systems and bracket systems. You know, just one day a year or twice a year, you know, you can have a, a group of people go in and adjust the brackets minimally just to improve their efficiency throughout the winter time. And it doesn't take much effort, but you collect so much more energy from that little effort. And that's also a way to, um, you know, give people hands-on experience and things like that on, on how to use solar and how it works. I'm an advocate of the learn one, do one, teach one.
Are there any questions?
So basically, the general maintenance of, of the solar farm is, is, is very minimal. What about breakdowns? What about, what about breakdowns in some of these panels? I mean, there must, there must be times where where they malfunction.
Yeah, definitely. You're no, but you're, we'll have, um, you know, we'll have voltage readers and amperage readers. So as soon as one of the panels messes up, since they're being wired in series and parallel, you're seeing a dramatic drop in the voltage or the amperage. So they have internal like biometric sensors that go off and let you know when something's going wrong with them anyway. Um, but I, you know, the, the other company also mentioned, um, it's not really, you know, solar's not what you have to worry about. It's more about, um, you know, the grid going down or the power dot, you know, being on. It's not the solar. That'll still make the energy. It just won't be able to give to you. That's also why I think it's a great idea to attach directly to the farm. You kinda cut out, you know, every little thing there. And plus, you're, you're creating a revenue for, you know, ten to twenty years down the road. Cause worst case scenario, I mean, in order to transition into new, renewable resources, Versant is raising our bills twenty-five percent within the next five years. So worst case, I mean, best case scenario, you'd still be paying ten percent more than you are now in, in five years. With the solar. So if you sign up for a solar and you get the fifteen percent discount, it's still ten percent more than it is now.
What are the wishes of the board?
So you, you, you're asking the board at this time to, to, to pursue this avenue and to, to put a proposal in front of us?
Yes, yeah. I'm asking you to give me an opportunity this semester to work with the various departments in the school to get a, a, a good and solid proposal done. As well as work with people on the planning board and get suggestions of possible land in the area. And with the school, I'll be able to do a regulatory analysis, do an engineering and accounting study and financial study. So, uh, I, I have all those assets and, um, I, I like to use them and be able to create a program that is extremely beneficial for the community.
I think one of the things we should do is put a meeting together during our next board meeting, come up with a matrix of what we feel should be involved in any solar project we get into. And then we can use that matrix to kinda put it, you know, vie against the companies who have made proposals to us and see which ones meet our needs the most.
I'd also like Gary to find out regulatory, you know, rulings on this, whatever we, the town would have to do or.
Well, there's another thing, uh, Denise, my, there's not a dis- you guys haven't established a disconnection plan for these solar contractors yet. Have you?
No.
No.
Cause I mean, that, that's a big thing. That's kinda why we're in the situation we're in right now. We didn't look twenty, thirty years down the road.
I, I do think they have decommissioning in their, in their contracts.
Okay.
But I need to go back and check. If that's what you're talking about.
Yeah. Well, cause they lease the land, so they can just leave the, you know, it's not really their obligation anymore. They can just get up and leave the panels there.
I, I can't imagine that the landlord would be you know, willing to accept the lease without
Oh, yeah.
Without, you know, decommissioning.
Yeah, no, I understand. I was just, that was something I, I was having trouble. You know, there's very little solar regulations. Um, so I'm trying, there's a lot for wind and a lot for hydro, but there's very little solar. So I've been working with, uh, Versant, the Utility Commission, the College, Department of Labor. I mean, um, there's a lot of moving parts. It's definitely a big project. But I think it, it's just overly beneficial for the town in the long run, especially if we sit down and, and we establish exactly what we're looking to get out of it before we start the project.
So in terms of, from what I've heard, you know, from other towns in Maine, what they've done in regards to solar, I mean, you're seeing a range of, of different options, right? And so what you see proposals like this, uh, not like this, but like what you heard last month or a couple weeks ago, to buy, uh, supply from solar companies, right? Then there's a community solar concept that's out there, but it's, it's more of a private developer works with a municipality, produce their energy. And, um, you, at twen- you know, uh, under those old proposals, at twenty years, you know, the project is yours. You know, they, they hand it over to you. Like when the efficiency's gone out of them, they walk away from the project and if the project stays with the municipality. The other things that I've seen municipalities do is mount solar, um, on their facilities. You know, either on roofs or on the land and you do the net metering thing. Uh, I don't know if I've ever heard of this kind of thing as far as a municipality being a provider of energy. But you do have like Van Buren, uh, you know, lightning, they have water and lights that you can
It's like six dollars a month.
And Holton has one as well too.
Oh, Holton does as well?
Yeah.
Yeah.
And so, um, I, I don't know. You know, I think, uh, there's a lot to consider.
Yeah, there is a lot.
There's debt service to consider and, and the town's debt limit and, uh, feasibility. I, I think that, uh, the board has your information, uh, to kinda think about it, um. And, you know, what I think, if it's okay with them, I think, you know, I'd like to, I'd like for them to have some time to think. I don't think they're ready to make any decisions here today.
Well, I'm not, uh, you know, asking you to invest it in this idea or anything right now. Like I said, I'm asking for you not to make a decision on one of those other solar farms until I get a, 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 a better and well-put-together proposal for you guys.
You know what a timeframe would be on that type of proposal from you?
Uh, it would definitely be by the end of the semester, so a couple months. I ca- I could send you guys updates, uh, Gary or, or somebody in particular, updates.
So the only thing I will add is that, you know, I, we're talking with solar companies, you know, you've charged me with working with them to negotiate and to work on contract language to put back before you. And I know that for them, time is a little bit of the essence.
Yeah.
Because they need to subscribe a number of subscribers to their projects and once they fill their, their, you know, their buyers, then you're locked out of, of their projects. And so, I just, I want you to be aware of that.
Timing could be an issue.
You have an infinite amount of time, um, to sit on, on those proposals either.
That's my one concern.
And then I don't, I don't want Jason to waste his time either.
Right.
Cause he was obviously a quite good work to do to, uh, to, to put something more refined.
I completely transitioned kinda my proposal, so I, I didn't really, I just started school again too, so I've been overloaded with all that. I, I've tried to, you know, get some quick numbers and everything together for this to progress, just to try to, you know, uh, let you guys know that there, there's other options out there. I appreciate it though.
Is there any way you can speed that up to get, in a few weeks, give us some information?
Yeah, I mean, uh, wha- what kinda information are you looking for in a few weeks?
First of all, I want to know regulatory first.
Okay. Well, on my side
Gary can take care of that.
Yeah. On my side, there, there's, there's no permits needed. I've already discussed, besides, well, we might discuss a, a road up or something like that. But in terms of, of DEP, I've already talked with the DEP, far enough away from everything that there's no environmental impacts.
I think, I think what Richard's alluding to is, the chair is alluding to is, from, you know, do we become a utility district? To become a, a provider of solar energy. And I think that, you know, I think it might be different because you're not, you're not the, the, the distributor of the energy. You're the, you're the producer of the energy. So Van Buren, uh, utility district is not a generator, I don't believe.
They're a distributor.
They're just a distributor.
Right.
Yeah. But I'll find out for sure.
You know, and then that may require going to town meeting and all that, you know?
Oh, it's certainly if, if there's borrowing to be done, uh, on, on this level, then yes.
Well, that's another point. I, I, I'm working with the school to apply for grants. So hopefully, the money that the town and the taxpayers in this town would have to put upfront would, would not be as much as predicted because we have grants and funding to cover a lot of it.
But that would go through the school system?
Yeah.
University, university?
University of Maine, four K.
Oh, okay, four K.
Or University of Maine. I mean, I, I'm taking one class at U M F K. Everything else is at Southern Maine and Machai right now. So, but my degree is at U M F K, but I'm working with engineers from, uh, Warnock, actually.
I know we definitely need more information.
Yeah.
Yeah, we're gonna, we're gonna be, um,
I mean, it's
stripped for time. It's gonna be tough for us to be able to make a decision with him and not put the others completely.
I don't wanna lead you on and say that we wanna do this and everything and then can find out that
Well, when, when, when do you think you, I mean, I, I, you give me a task and you give me a time to get it done, I'll get it done. You know, I, I'll get it done.
I, I think that, you know, we're, we're looking at a thirty-day timeframe. I think the board is gonna be, um,
That's probably the longest meeting.
But we, we've made an indication to the solar providers that we're probably considering, are they gonna be considering a decision in the October board meeting?
Yeah.
Okay.
Okay, so, um, right now, we're sort of refining the, the lease agreements and I think, you know, they're not all committed to twenty-year leases, novel and, I mean, French entity is, uh, is put forth a five-year. Uh, and I think the other companies are looking at potentially five years as well, so, um, but in any case.
I think that's, you know, that's great. Five years is great, you know, definitely.
So, I, I guess the only thing I can do is try to, you know, facilitate this as much as you can. I don't want you to spend a, a whole lot of time working on something for nothing, right? That's not right. And so, and this board would like to see, hear more from you, um, for sure, before they make a decision. So, I, I, I'm gonna lean on them to say, are you thinking about making a decision at the October board meeting? Uh, in that regard, um, because the comments that were made to me is that, you know, once they have all their buyers for their arrays that they're putting in, then we could be locked out of those, out of those projects if, if, if we are interested in entering into one.
And that was my concern because I know one of them at least was looking to be mid-next year and online, the other one towards the end of the year. So they're looking for their commitment sooner than later, which it's kinda catch twenty-two whether you wait for more information and you miss out on that one in hopes that this one works out, or if we get too far into that one and then it fails and we've missed the boat on the other one. I think timing is gonna be a problem, you know what I mean? That's my only. But I, I suspect we would have, uh, a few weeks to gather some more information to see if we had time. That would be my, I guess my recommendation is to give this about three weeks to gather some more information. So we can get time to sit back here because we'll have to meet prior to that board meeting if we're gonna make a decision come the middle of October. We'll have to meet again to discuss what his findings are at that point. So, uh, timing is gonna be an issue, I think.
Quick question in terms of, would you like me to just focus on, um, creating energy for the municipal buildings and that's that? Would you like me to focus on maybe something big enough where you can get revenue and sell that energy to people in town as well? I mean, would you like it to just, you know, get enough energy for the municipal buildings? Or would you like it to be bigger? The bigger it is, the bigger the investment would be. But you'd also get revenue for it at, at the same time.
Recognize Mark?
Mr. Chairman, how many solar farms are looking to come into town besides his?
Three.
One in St. David's.
One in St. David's, I know.
And then the one in French.
What's the problem with having more than one solar farm in town? The numbers are there. What's the problem with having more than one in town? If the state allows it? I don't see a problem with him having his plus the other one in St. David's. If it all drives out in the end, what's the difference?
Cause his plan, we're, we have to be a partner in it.
You don't necess- no, you don't necessarily have to be a partner right now. I, I, you know, I, I wanna get the input and see if that's something you guys are willing to do. I mean, I, I, I'd like to be able to apply for grants and put, you know, the town of Manawaska on it. It would make it, you know, a, a little easier, I think, to, to gain access to certain grants. Especially, you know, renewable energy grants.
I just wanna clarify something for Mr. Seer. Uh, if, if we say no to all, I think it was three people who gave us, if we say no to all three of them, they're still gonna build their solar plants. We're just not gonna benefit from it.
I don't, I don't, if there's room in town to have three different solar farms, what's the problem with it?
Yeah, and that's not, that's not the decision we're looking at. They're looking at, do you wanna buy solar from us? They're, they're still gonna make their plant regardless, so we'll still have the three or four.
If we're buying, if we're getting it, like he's saying, if Versant's saying that, that within the next five years, we're gonna go up twenty-five percent.
Right.
Okay, and he can save the town fifteen percent, so in reality, the next five years, we're only gonna go up ten percent instead of twenty-five. In a way, that's actually worth it. Now, that's just on one solar plant. But if we're buying with the other ones also, that could change.
Right, but let's not confuse the two things. So Versant is not a provider of, of supply.
Right.
They, they distribute. So Versant's gonna increase their distribution rate. It's gonna, that's not gonna change. We go up twenty-five percent no matter what.
Okay.
It's the supply that we're talking about here.
Okay. But if your supply goes down, it's still, one's gonna offset the other one.
Right.
Yeah, but we have also debt service that we have to consider here.
Yeah.
Uh, if a town makes back its money off of it, that's a whole different other animal. You know, it depends how much of an investment that we're, we're looking to.
I mean, to consider the idea that this would be, um, basically for the, for the municipality, I mean, it could be a decent consideration at this point. You know, and see how it goes, see what you can put together.
I would suggest to be in comparison with what we have on the table from the other three, it was just municipality. It wasn't, wasn't for residents, so.
But their farm was four megawatts.
Yes.
So they, they create enough energy at, at their farm at forty days that you need all year. So for forty days of power, you pay them a hundred and fifteen thousand dollars.
Well, no.
Well, yeah, you pay them the, the power, so that
We're paying Versant, the distribution, we're paying the supply.
That doesn't change. That, Versant distribution doesn't change, but
Yeah.
The cost of where the supplier is, goes down.
Well, that's why I, I think it's important to focus on some areas within the town. Cause you can severely, you know, cut your costs then, especially during, you know, the days when it, the sun comes up around here at five o'clock in the morning, four thirty in the morning. You're collecting sun all day.
I would suggest that you talk to Gary. Once Gary gets more information, he can share with us. Early October, probably we could have a meeting and discuss it, finally finalize it then. Is there more agreement with that?
Yeah, I ju- I wouldn't wait much longer than that.
You know, I was thinking our meeting would be, the next meeting would be October five, if that's all right.
Just for this?
I just wanna give Mr. Houston a date that he can say, okay, I have to work. I just wanna give Mister Houston a date that he can say, okay, I have to work.
I I I, it's not like I I'd be doing work for no reason, so I I I'll just use it as schoolwork. But I'd like, you know, I'm I'm a little older. I went back to school and and I learned what I wanna learn. I have kind of a purpose. I choose, I choose what's important.
And I and I think it would be good, uh, you know, you s- you mentioned that you have partners like University of Maine. It would be good for this board if they had some sort of commitment letters.
Yeah, um, I I actually, what, I, maybe I can bring um uh some people from the University of Maine to the next meeting, so they can give them an understanding of how they're involved.
Yeah, you know, and if we have questions in the meantime, we'll come on through Gary, he can send it to you.
Okay, yeah, that's awesome. I mean, um, we have a website and everything as well too, with all the other information. But my initial proposal, like I said, has transitioned into more focusing on the municipality, becoming its own producer versus the consumers buying their own energy, basically.
So, we're gonna shoot for October five? That was your plan?
Yeah, I just wanna know.
Yep.
Does that work for October five?
Does for me.
Yep.
Five thirty.
Five thirty?
Five thirty.
Five thirty, right?
Yes.
Five thirty.
We were here at five thirty today, right? I just wanna make sure it's five thirty. Well, thank you very much, everybody. I appreciate it.
Thank you.
Thank you. Move on to Article five, to consider M O D request for for comment on a driveway opening permit for Linda Seer at two seventy-six Main Street table from the August eighteen meeting. Linda?
So, um, the last meeting, Mister Chair, we had cabled things so we can find out some more information. So, what we did is we read Agenda Pack. If you have information from the planning board meetings.
Yes.
Uh, to see whether there was a change of use approval on that property. So, you have that information. Uh, there was a change of use approved for that, but it was for partial change of use. It was residential in the back, commercial in the front. And the property was changed to full, full residential, and I believe they went before the planning board last week. And the planning board cabled their any action on that, um, s- until they could get more information. So, that's the history of of the change of the use. I think that was in question at the last board meeting. Uh, besides that, I think, you know, um, the only update, uh, the only other update that I have is that I was contacted by Bob Watson from the region, uh, Director for M D O T. Um, I know that uh Mister Seer had met with Bob and he called to discuss, um, where they were at in respect to M D O T's driveway opening permit. Um, and that what they've done is given a conditional approval for that, uh, meaning, uh, if the board, um, approves sit on our end for the sidewalk alterations, then they would approve the driveway open permit by not without, so, um, right now, it's it's basically the balls in the court.
So, it's conditional with board approval?
Yes, meaning if you say okay, then they're gonna, they're gonna approve that the driveway opening permit will be approved.
Okay. I was looking at the minutes with the planning board on August five. It was mentioned that you need parking for residents and they said that you do not. And then they tried to purchase a parking lot across the street and that was denied. And then it mentions here Ricky states that the Mitch heating does not have a lot across the street and we make that lot available for Linda's tenant if needed. Was that pursued?
He said, um, Gary, Gary said we needed clarification what the new resident two seventy-six Main Street is.
Any clarification?
I'd just like you to know that my understanding, when I came to the board in last July, when I purchased it for my son, was that I was going to try to make it work as commercial in front. And if I couldn't, could I turn it into residential? And what I understood was that I could, that I bought a permit for residential. But Gary's telling me that I obviously misunderstood. It's one or the other. It's um more dual. Like they gave me commercial and residential. My understanding was, as I owned the property, I use it as residential. If I sold it and somebody said, hey, I could put a beautiful on a date here, here, I'd like a commercial, they'd have to come to the board and ask for a commercial and they'd be granted. That was my understanding. And then the appraiser came and he told me that for me to have it as a residential, I had to change the whole format. So, I kept it um commercial from that July till all of last year, through the pandemic, through the winter. And when spring came, I realized that wasn't gonna work. So, I decided to make it residential. And I had to redo the whole place. It wasn't, it wasn't up to par to be a residential place. I had to buy all new blind, bits and things of that nature. So, I invested fifteen thousand. Initially, when I got it, I used some windows that I had for a swimming pool that I was gonna use building. And um, so it only cost me a few thousands when I turned it into a commercial the way it was, to make it look better. My intent was to do both, you know, have a little storefront in the in the front and uh an apartment, an apartment in the back. So, I realized that wasn't gonna work, but a house would, better than an apartment. I do have several houses and people maintaining homes better than they do apartments. So, the um appraiser came and said, you gotta change this. And when you do, I can change your taxes from commercial of three thousand two hundred for a better, more attainable. I said, okay. So, he came back about a month ago or five weeks and he checked the properties and it was absolutely gorgeous and it was completely residential. It's a beautiful home. And that he would have the taxes assessed again for me. I never received the actual new assessment. So, there's a problem with the driveway when winter coming. Now, Gary says that D O T says it's a conditional permit. What I received in the mail is a permit from Department of Transportation after I talked to Bob, Mister Watson. And he dealt with um people in Augusta. I received in the mail, I was granted a permission for the driveway through them. Now, I figured they're higher than the towns. But Gary informed me that it's their sidewalk, it's the town sidewalk, and there's certain things, criteria that needs to be done. And I told him I would do whatever it did, it would take to get that up to par. I would pay for it financially and everything. Well, in the permit that I received, I received certain things, requirements that I have to do to honor that permit. And one of them is, you have to back into your driveway. You can't just drive in like everybody else. You have to pay for the curbing, you have to do this. And I don't have a problem with that. But now the town's saying that uh it's a safety issue. So, I spoke to Mister Watson again, I went to see him. And I explained that uh someone mentioned if there is a um a sidewalk, a passing, that legally, you can't have a driveway next to it. So, it's a safety issue and it's a legal thing. So, I said, fine, I I respect that. And I said, how about taking that vision sidewalk, it's a walkway, taking those painted lines and bring it one building over where the old House of Pizza is, where my building is, where there's no driveway. Those buildings are connected, there'll never be a driveway, but just move that walkway over. Then legally, it wouldn't be near a driveway. And so, here we are tonight trying to decide if we're gonna have a driveway or not. And is it residential? Is it commercial? Is it dual use? What are my taxes? I mean, I don't know where I stand with this at this point. I do, I do have a tenant and he's signed a contract for two years. And um, he's had no qualms, no problems. He likes it there. He's the president of the bridge. And um, I'm trying to accommodate him because he's done so much in this town, millions of dollars. And all I wanted was some simple driveway for the guy. So, and I did speak with Mitch and, you know, he, I'm related to him now, but I don't want special favors. And he's saying that he needs, technically needs his driveway. He's got his, his van. He's got another van that he uses for his furnaces and he needs that area. So, I don't know. I mean, he's willing to help if he can. And I don't have an access to a backyard, uh, or below. You know how some people drive down the driveway, around it, go down below and they have their access to their place? I don't have that. And the other thing is, at this point right now, the gentleman that's staying there, he's there four days a week. He's not there in the evenings. He doesn't go anywhere. The person, Ricky's House of Pizza that he purchased is vacant, has been for years, and probably will continue. The next building over, they have people that come Monday to Friday from eight to five. They're not there in the evenings and they're not there on the weekends. Um, as far as pedestrians and all of that, I've monitored that all summer. There's hardly anybody that's out at five, five thirty in the morning when my gentleman goes to work. So, I hope that you consider this for him, not for me. Thank you.
Good. Because have you looked at other sites? Cause just down the street from that, there's an empty lot there with a driveway access to the hot tub.
What do you mean down the street?
Where the old caboose used to be. I looked at that. There's an empty lot there.
The old bowling alley used to be, the old bowling alley used to be.
Yeah. The driveway's already there. It was, it was grandfathered.
Yeah, everything was grandfathered.
Taliesin's? I don't know. I don't know who owns it.
We saw.
I think, uh, yeah, Pitters Forest there.
Okay.
And I guess my point is, I'm paying taxes. I paid last year thirty-two hundred for a vacant building. My son paid it the year prior to, that's why he sold it, is that's a home or a residence, whether someone's living upstairs or downstairs. That's their residence and they should have that use of their home. Why should I inconvenience him down the road when he has a yard right there that he can back right out and go to work?
What is the board?
So, according to the.
Any other questions or?
Yeah, according to the September seventh meeting with the planning board, they're still considering it a mixed area, so it's residential and commercial at this point in time, right?
Okay. Look, I I I just, um, you know, we have a lot, there's a lot of considerations here. There's safety, there's loss of parking. Uh, there's effect on property value. If there's businesses that would eventually wanna locate, um, around there and there's less parking on Main Street, I think that there there's an impact of the property values there potentially. Uh, I I don't think you can necessarily move the crosswalk closer to an intersection. I think that becomes a safety in on Eleventh Ave especially. Uh, that's a pretty big, pretty busy artery over there. Um, I was looking at, we were looking at, for other reasons, the traffic counts for Main Street in twenty seventeen. Uh, on the intersection of Bridge and Main Street, uh, M D O T's traffic counts are about seven thousand vehicles a day. So, there's a significant amount of traffic through there. So, I think safety is a concern. Uh, and then precedence as well. And I know that in the past, the, and it's not just a Madawaska thing, but downtowns and municipalities with downtowns really frown upon conversion of commercial property to residential. And um, when you, if you were to go ahead and say, oh, it's, we're fine with this, then you could potentially be creating precedents for future requests. And is that something you wanna put yourself in a position to have to deny somebody else? You know what I mean? So, um, I I'm gonna maintain a position that I maintained before that, uh, it's a safety issue, it's a parking issue, um, it's a property value issue. And that's not to dismiss uh Mister Seer's concerns about being able to to generate a revenue, uh, with an empty building. I get that. Uh, that's a good argument to make. Um, but, um, the building was approved for a certain kinda use and it was changed. And and, you know, coming in after the fact and asking for permission afterwards, you know, it's just not a good way to set some, set precedence.
Yeah, and there's the issue of snow removal there too.
Correct.
Okay, if I may speak for.
Yeah, you're, go ahead, Linda.
Gary, or in response to Gary. Gary, I'm not asking for this to be pushed over to Eleventh Avenue. Here's the crosswalk where it stands right now. And my driveway is right next to it. So, by law, somebody is correct, whether it's a police chief or one of the guys. He said, Linda, you can't have a crosswalk with the driveway right next to it. I said, okay, I understand that. So, let's take it not to Eleventh Avenue. That's not what I'm asking. The crosswalk's right there, near my driveway. Let's move it over a door or so. And at the, at my door, there's the old House of Pizza. We're joined. There's no alley, there's nothing. We're brick to brick. So, let's move that crosswalk over here, maybe ten feet or seven feet, I don't know. Then it's no longer a safety issue. As far as financial, I put so much into, there's no other building on Main Street that's nicer than that. You've been in there, you've seen it.
I want to dispute that. You have a nice building.
Thank you. My point is, it brought up the value. Other people want their, their homes and their businesses to be really nice. Like I said to the planning board, let's look ahead. Let's look at now at the economy. I see the economy where everybody's hurting from Main Street, Madawaska across the United States. Those buildings that you see with all the businesses, because of the internet, Walmart, whatever, we don't have the businesses we have. We have people changing to dual. I am not the first, and I certainly won't be the last, asking for a residence on the first floor. We have an aged population here in town. They need, we don't have the facilities. They will need that first floor on Main Street for the ambulance, fire department, or what have you. Those Main Street be- uh, buildings for now, in the next ten years, is going to accommodate our aged population. You have to change with that. You have to think about that. It may change back. People may say, screw internet, we're gonna shoplift. They don't. Right now, they don't. With the pandemic coming again, even today, another couple thousand. Businesses aren't going to be on Main Street. They're vacant. They have been vacant for years and it's getting worse. If we can get people in there as tenants.
The the issue is not the dual purpose or the whatever. The issue is safety. Safety.
What's a safety issue?
Well, crosswalk at an angle is a safety, in my mind, because at ninety degrees, you can see both sides. At a forty-five degree, you don't have that mobility to look. You have to turn more than ninety degrees to look in one direction.
So, why don't you make it straight across? That's less.
And then you have to cross. Most of the traffic is coming down from from Shehellen's and walking.
Forty-five miles an hour.
You're also gonna lose a crosswalk on, on a parking area on the opposite side of the street if you move the crosswalk up. It's not just gonna eliminate one on that side.
Yeah.
You're gonna lose it on the other side. And the crosswalk, whether you have an angle or not, is likely gonna be closer to, if it's Twelfth Ave or whatever it is, on that end of it. So, in my mind, and, you know, looking at some of the things that we know that, you know, we're working on, whether it's other businesses that may come down there or development of multi- other businesses that may come down there or development of multi-use trails, things like that, it can become a problem in the very near future. I, I think there's a lot to consider there and I don't, the downfall of it all is, and she has a ton of valid points and it is a great property and things like that. You can't take that away, but you know, had the permit process been done right and the change of use would have been, we could have dealt with this before the money was invested at that time. And then it becomes a sore topic. So for me, I'd still stand.
I'd like to entertain Mark Sears. He had a question.
No, I just had a statement. We have, she's talking about a crosswalk at Twelfth Avenue that goes over to where the old Verdiars used to be. What's the problem with moving that crosswalk, get rid of it completely? Move it over to Thirteenth Avenue. Move it over to Thirteenth Avenue on the east side of the street. We cross right there, right across and you're right over there. So that way there, you're actually gaining a parking space by removing it completely and then giving her a spot so she can park her vehicles at the same time. So you're not losing no parking. And the crosswalk, just move fifty feet up the street. And if you want to set up another crosswalk, you can set up another one on the east side of Bird Street, crossing Main Street, right by Vinnie's place. You already have the big elephant here there. All we've got to do is cut into the elephant here and make another crosswalk right there.
The issue I see with moving the crosswalk is that is actually a heavy used area that people cross the street, especially in the wintertime when the skidoo's who are going to Big Rick's, park up across and cross there. So by moving the crosswalk, you're not going to move the traffic. People are still going to cross at that intersection and, and that's what I'm a little worried about.
Well, you still got, well, you got the other one on this side of where Big Rick's on Brick Street. You can just move from there to there. That's it. It's going to be used over there, as long as people know about it. But that's a, that's an option for you guys.
Mark.
All due respect, who uses crosswalks? I don't mean to make light of the situation by no means, but seriously, I've driven up and down. Who's using the crosswalk? Something to consider. And again, I'm not making light of the situation, but something to be considered.
Okay. I guess, oh, to, to make a positive motion to at least get a vote from the board, I just, I'll make a motion to consider the request for the, for the driveway opening permit.
Is there a second to that motion?
I second it.
Before you do that, why can't you consider what D O T's saying? Aren't they experts on what they've been doing forever?
So I, I think D O T's just looking at it from a totally different aspect from what we're looking at. There's, you're looking at two different entities here. And, and I think from our standpoint, you know, where that crosswalk is right now, whether today, that parking area across from there, that's filled with um, I don't know if it's a yard sale, whatever's going on over there, who owns that? There's another building that's being renovated that potentially turns into a viable business in the near future. That crosswalk, that intention, my guess is, was intended because of that parking area over there. If you take that away and drop that down here or move that up there, I just don't think we're making a s- a smart move and I think we're going to set a precedence where we're going to deal with this. I think there was a disregard to the permitting process that brought us to where we're at. I, you know, that's unfortunate. It's just what I see. I-
It's not a disregard.
I, I don't think that-
Nor disrespect.
We, the change of use.
He has a floor.
I don't think the change of use was resubmitted to make it total residential. Had that been done properly at that time, those issues would have come out because there would have had to been a plan in place for the placement of the driveway at that time. Is that not correct?
But at the August meeting, it was mentioned and they mentioned in there, they didn't need a parking space.
Because they were going to use it as a commercial.
In the front.
In the front, as a gift shop. Everything I see relates to commercial on one piece, residential on another and no parking was needed. And that's why I'm saying if, at that point, it made sense. But if you take it and you convert it all to residential as she's done, which for her, it made all the right sense, you know, and I get all of that, but on the other end of it, you know, now we, we're dealt with a hand that you don't, it's, it's not nice either way, you know what I mean? So.
Do you have a motion on the floor? No second?
No.
So then the motion fails?
Yes, it fails, yeah.
Move on.
Is there another motion? No action?
Not if the motion failed, I mean, we move on. It's uh-
I'll be honest to you, I'll second it.
No, you know, nobody wants to make a motion? So move on. There's no motion to be made and the board is, no decision to make.
What about, is it dual? What is it? I mean, that's another thing. Wasn't that a disregard?
We're, we're only talking about the dri- the driveway here.
Well, I don't know what the property is. Is it residential? Is it commercial? Is it dual? Both?
It's dual.
Dual?
It's dual.
Yeah, it's, it's-
It's dual according to the paperwork we have in front of us.
So can you clarify dual for other people that didn't know as well as I did? What is a dual?
Well, you'll provide a documentation.
I think she already has it all. It's her permitting process.
Okay.
How about informing the public? What is dual when you say you've got dual residency or?
So I think the land use code is, is there for everyone to see. It's on our website. It's available. We can make copies of it. It's, it's pretty clear that when you want to change the use of a, of a property in the land use code, you, you've got to go before the planning board. And you, you've done that, right? So you were aware of the process and others would follow that same process.
Yeah, but I'm saying, my understanding of it was one or the other, not both. I didn't understand that. So I took it, I'm going to try it, commercial and then go to residential. That's my understanding and I can read very well. So I'm saying for the public.
The issue tonight is, is the driveway and we have no motion on that, so we're moving on. Do you want to talk to Gary or to the co-enforcement or whatever?
So there's no motion on the driveway. Can you please clarify exactly what you're telling me as I walk out and say thank you?
Yeah, I'm telling you, you have no, no action. That's plain and simple.
Your request is basically denied by the fact that they didn't take an action.
By no action.
So can I take it one step further to the Board of Appeals?
No, it's not anything that goes before the Board of Appeals.
Why is that?
Cause it's not, that's not the role that's defined in, that's not a role for them to make in this decision process. This was a, this, a decision or a request to alter the sidewalks, create a driveway there and that's not something that goes before the Board of Appeals. What would go before the Board of Appeals is a, is a um request to go before them based on a decision of, of the C E O or the planning board that, you know, they want to get a variance or things like that. But this is not something that went before the Board of Appeals uh or the planning board. This went before the Board of Selecting.
Okay. We'll move on to Article six. It's to consider an update of the town's paving project for the Public Works Director.
I gave you guys a copy of a, a breakdown of what we've done so far. As far as the removal, we've hot popped and the type of work we've done on. Uh I updated it a little bit after I got this out today because I was still missing some of the slips. We've got about twenty thousand tons that were placed now so far. Cause I didn't have nothing for old South this road. I didn't get the ton of slips yet. But uh so far up to date, we've applied three, uh one point, uh one million three hundred forty-two thousand, three hundred seventy-six dollars of hot top. And that was about eighteen five, eighteen thousand five hundred tons. And we've spent about fifty thousand dollars in shoulder work and preparing of the roads before we hot top. And that includes some of the roads that we, we did the signs that were faded or broken and we changed them. Right now, as we speak, we are five hundred, five hundred tons under what we've estimated. So we were able to get a section on Greenpoint extra. And we were able to get a section on Level Two in a swamp that was extra that was falling apart. And then a couple uh cross culverts that were sunk. We were able to notch that out and redo that. So we're basically on target and right now, we're on four year old. We should be done tomorrow. With the hopings that after that, we can move on the Upper Eleventh and Pelletier Road and start that.
Okay.
If you look on the other page, there's a breakdown of all the uh, the pay requisitions, what we paid out and uh so far and what we've uh spent at Ed Pelletier's and Long Lake and Hebert Brothers for material and work that was done.
I just want to say that Soderberg's quality of the work is fantastic. A lot of good feedback by residents of the town. Um and so I'm, I'm pleased with, you know, a lot of people are pleased with the quality of the work that they're, they're putting out for us.
Absolutely. I appreciate your management of the project also, so well deserved.
Have you, uh, the same opinion as far as Soderberg?
Soderberg is top notch as far as I'm concerned for the quality of work.
Yep.
And uh I mean, their foreman that's on the site, Bill, is really on top of things and if we can stretch it a little bit, they make sure that we're getting everything that we're paying for and, you know what I mean? There's no wasting or there's no, when, you know, we're gone that to crank up the machine, there's really no problem with it.
Any, any, any complaints, anything that you would be wanting to share with the board?
Nope. I, we had a few issues when we started off as far as what we expected, you know what I mean? As far as the width of the roads and that. But within a day or two, we ironed that out and since then, it's been very good.
Good.
The only, the only pressure being placed upon Kevin is, you know, people know there's a paving project in town and everybody wants to make sure that it's done, right? So they're, they're, you know, Kevin's constantly being reminded that they have, by residents, that they have paving needs as well in their, in their neighborhoods.
Oh yeah, of course.
Right? And that's okay.
Hey, right Kevin, if you ran the electric or hot top, you know, I don't mind paying you to come do my, get all the sand stopped going. Only if you have extra enough to do.
Thank you for the article.
I'll pay for it.
Thank you.
Article seven, to consider a request by the ambulance director to replace a monitor on one ambulance.
Ken.
Mr. Sears?
All right. Okay, just wanted to make, I appreciate, I'm sorry I invaded your agenda a little bit. And you guys are very busy outside of this quick. Basically what happened is it's not necessarily a request to purchase or to trade in a monitor, but I just wanted to bring you guys uh to speed. I felt compelled to let you know uh the situation that is unfolding. One of our monitors is an older version monitor. Uh and the board, the, what the computer rise board inside the monitor is outdated. And they will not be able to repair that if we would have some sort of catastrophic failure anymore. So how I uncovered this is, it, it was, it was time for us to renew our service contracts with the, with the striker. Every three years, we sign a contract with them to, they service all our monitors and make sure they're calibrated correctly and all that. Um and when I emailed him, it says it's time to renew that. And he, he came back with me, he says, we can't, we could still service that one particular monitor, but they will not put it on a three-year contract. They'll just do it on a year-by-year basis. Okay, he says it's not a safety issue. The monitor is still fine, but if it fails, we'll be fa- we'll probably likely be forced to buy and you want it right then and there at that point.
Have you experienced that failure in the past?
No.
Okay.
Nope, I have not. It's not to say it can't happen. They're great monitors. They work well. Uh but in light of everything, I said, well, let me know what you can do. He had put me through, through his other rep uh for a trade-in. He says they've been working on, on uh some good promos that he was actually able to extend for us. Uh and I, you know, it's a really good price. I felt compelled to let you guys know. So this way, next year, if a monitor dies, you know, we'll say we, you know, that I did bring up a proposal. I just, you know, wanted to let you guys know. A monitor, the last one we bought was thirty-four thousand dollars. This year, this quote that he's given me here with the trade-in, for, he gave us a quote for thirty, for um ninety-five hundred dollars for the trade-in. The total value of the monitor, the, with the uh discount that he's given us was at twenty-nine thousand six-ten. He took off the ninety-five hundred and he's also added a four-year service plan to this quote as well. So we'll be on the service plan automatically just purchasing this monitor. Uh we can do three uh installments of eighty-three hundred forty-eight dollars per year if we want for three years. Or we can buy outright if you should so decide. Um I just felt compelled because this was a very good deal and it would just really put us up to date with our software that, that's, that's within that monitor. But as I mentioned, it's not a safety issue. If we decide that, that we should come out, then I'll just have them service it once a year as we go. The servicing is very important that it gets done. Um it's an insurance plan more or less. So if a monitor fails on a call, you know, it, our monitors have a maintenance program. If we don't have a maintenance program and we have a monitor that fails on us and somebody suffers the, the consequences of that, that could be a very big deal. Uh so it's very important that we, we certainly have this service plan. So basically, I'd, I'd like to just ask you guys if you're, you'd be interested in moving on with this or just shall I just move on? Get that one monitor serviced every year and then I'll put the other two on a four-year service plan.
Okay. Was it your intention to replace it in the future?
No, not really. I was not aware of the software uh thing up until now.
Questions?
I mean, let me reiterate that. Yes, I mean, at some point, the monitors at fifteen, twenty years, yes, they will get replaced. And this is the older one and we're just at about nine years, I think, with that one.
Okay. Your service contracts, uh, uh, four-year contract, how much does that come down to per year?
I'm not sure what the four-year is going to be. I, and I said four-year, the last time they did one, we did one, it was a three-year contract. And it was supposed to be pricing today and unfortunately he didn't get, I didn't get an email back from him. But the last time we did a contract with them, which was three years ago, for three monitors, it was a three-year, it was eleven, hang on here. Fair, eleven thousand six ninety-six for all three monitors. And we paid it in three-year.
Right.
And yearly installments. It was three thousand some odd dollars uh that we paid. Now they offer a four-year terms as well if we want, you know, so that would make our yearly payments a little cheaper as well.
Okay, there it is, yeah. Okay, so they're looking at thirty-six hundred for the four-year here and then-
So I was kind of hoping he was going to get back to me today. He told me he would get me stuff this, by this afternoon. Unfortunately, I didn't get an email back from him. Uh I'll certainly be back next month with, you know, with, with pricing because we, we certainly need to get those monitors uh calibrated and taken care of.
And this promotion ends on, on the thirtieth?
Yeah, that's kind of why I wanted to-
Well, I don't think that's going to, I think it's going to gain value over time. So do we, is there an uh equipment reserve for, for the ambulance there that, that can be funded out of?
Yeah.
Right. I'll make a motion to-
Do we have val- what's the balance in that?
How much? Two fifty-one?
Two fifty-one?
I want, so I'll make, I'll make a motion. We go ahead and purchase the uh, the item at the eight thousand three hundred forty-eight dollars per year, three annual payments, so.
And you're, you're taking that out of reserve?
Taking it out of the reserve account, yeah.
Out of reserve.
Okay, you have a motion?
Uh, uh, before you're done, can I just clarify? So your action to take it out of reserve is that for successive year or on a one, where to revisit this?
Well, we're into the three years. I had eight thousand three hundred a year, so it would be for the full three years.
Right. So your motion would basically approve the drawing of the, of the annual payment from reserves-
Right, for three years.
For the next three years?
Correct.
Okay, that's, that's just one of the-
Yeah, until paid in full year.
Three-year plan.
I'll second that motion, but can I ask another question?
Yeah.
In, is it feasible to pay it all now instead of spreading that out over three years?
Yeah.
Would you get a discount on that if you do that?
No, I think we've done, got about the best discount we can right now. I could ask. I'm certainly asking for a final quote. I mean, if, if we do pay it all.
That three-year, it just costs extra, right?
Cause I'm just, if you're going to pay it out, if you're going to do a lease finance, you're going to be financing charges.
So right on an eight- It seems to me we're not going to-
The, the only thing it was that they would allow you to keep them.
Well, that's keep your, but you're talking what?
Yeah.
Sixteen to eighteen thousand?
I don't think they have added finance charges to that.
Yeah, if, if you look at the cost of what they, they quoted out and then the breakdown, it comes out to the similar amount.
Yeah, twenty-three thousand eight oh nine forty-five and then the prepayments would be eighty-three forty-eight and forty-seven cents.
Okay, so there's no, there's no financial charges there? That's good then.
Eight times three is twenty-four thousand.
You're right.
Yeah, a little bit might.
Oh, there is a little more. You're right with it.
Yeah.
That's what I was seeing too.
All right, well, in that case, I'll modify my motion to make one-
Yes, it was in first.
Yeah, I will always in first. You're going to modify.
I'll modify my motion to make one payment of twenty-three thousand eight hundred nine forty-five out of the reserve account.
I'll second that.
Second that. Any more discussion?
I think the taxpayers see it better that way too.
Yeah.
Yeah.
No, I agree.
Okay.
Yep.
Okay. All those in favor of the motion? Against? Motion carries. Article eight is to consider the demolition of a tax-acquired two forty-seven Main Street building. Project to add into the shopping center demolition project request for proposal.
So this property at two forty-seven Main Street, it's been vacant for quite some time. It's been tax-acquired for a while. And um, you know, one of the reasons why it's still- And, um, you know, one of the reasons why it's still, we've been sitting on it because we have a sidewalk project that's coming in. Uh, next, in twenty-twenty-two is what I've been doing now. And that side, you know, the front of that building and the steps are pretty much in the DOT right-of-way. And there's some EDA accessibility issues there that are gonna be addressed. Uh, when we put in the new sidewalks that start from fourteen that, going all the way to sixty. Even though they're not touching this side of the intersection, when, when DOT funds a sidewalk project, they gotta touch all four corners for EDA, um, compliance.
Yes.
And so we've already moved the telephone pole there. Uh, they moved it to get it out of the drop. You know, like the, there's gonna be the handicap, uh, uh.
Dimple plate or whatever.
Yeah.
Like railing.
And, um, but they moved the pole over in this direction, in the eastbound direction. Uh, but they were very limited to where they can put it because there's sewer and broadband buried there. And so it's very tight to the building, the steps. So much so that it's gonna be hard to get the, uh, help. It's gonna be even tighter now to get the bobcat by there to clear the sidewalks.
I noticed they plated the bottom of that pole.
Yeah.
I'm sure it's been hit a few times. Uh, I'm sure.
Tight.
It's tied in.
Right. So, so the, the reason why, that's one of the reasons why we've been sitting on it and I think for a while now. And, you know, the building, um, has been vacant, it's been cold for ten years. Uh, and, you know, we're putting it before the board to see if we wanna tear that down. I think there are some interests, uh, by, by some adjacent property owners for some land potentially there. And, um, if we would want to tear the building down, the timing would be good in the sense that we already have a project that's coming where there's gonna be some environmental survey work and some remediation. It, that's a good time to do it when you have another project going on, so it's for you to consider.
I'm gonna, I'll make a motion we add to that project. I think it'll make sense.
I'll second that.
So, so do we have any, um?
We have a motion and we have a second discussion?
All right. So i- is there any, any, um, recovery in cost here as far as just the land that we're gonna end up with at this point?
So, you know, the land, I guess you can put it out to bid, right? Or, or the, the, because it's tax or, this one is actually sewer-acquired. The, the language gives you the authority to sell the property, any tax-acquired or sewer-acquired property in the best interest of the town. So you could decide to put that out to bid. You could accept an offer if you think it's in the best interest of the town. That's totally up to you. Past practice is we've always put tax-acquired or sewer-acquired properties out to bid. We advertise, seal bid. Uh, you, you can set the terms. You can put a minimum bid, uh, whatever that is.
Yeah.
Uh, typically on a straightforward tax-acquired property, the board's really just, or the town is really just interested in at least getting what's owed for taxes and sewer fees and weeds and fees and stuff like that. Uh, in this instance, um, you know, you may want to consider, um, you know, the cost of the demo and see if you want to try to recover some of that and structure that into your, your bid, uh, proposal or your request for proposals.
Any more discussion?
Nope.
Hearing done. All those in favor of the motion? Who's against? Motion carries. Article nine, to consider a complaint by Mark Seer regarding private playground equipment placed on town property. Mr. Seer? This is a picture of the, of the, yeah.
Yes, it is. You have a picture of where the property is, where the town property is, that's the road.
Gary, were we aware that that had been placed there?
I mean, I think we were made aware. So, uh, to the extent that people, you know, might have their belongings on, on town property. We have various pieces of town property scattered throughout the town and.
Yeah. And you need checking it would be a liability to the town, right?
I did check. Uh, I called the insurance. They, they felt that it could potentially be a liability.
Okay, that's the worst part. I'll make a motion to have the equipment removed off town property due to liability issues. First step would be a letter? Yeah.
What do we have for a plan for that? What is the use of that land outside of just sitting there right now?
So that is an undeveloped Canaan Street, right? And so, um, it, it's, Canaan Street is, is not fully recognized as a street all the way through from twenty-fifth to twenty-sixth. But part of it is being used on the twenty-sixth Ave side. That one was never made into a road or accepted as a townway. That side of it, or both sides, but Canaan on the twenty-sixth Ave, uh, is being used on the twenty-fifth side now. It's just land, lawn. Uh, it's been cared for by people and presumably Mark and maybe the neighbor have been mowing the lawns there, keeping it, keeping it mowed like it was their own. So Mark, uh, had approached the town some history on that, uh, last year. He was interested in purchasing that piece of land. Because it's not town, it's not tax-acquired property. We, we've gotta go to the voters to get permission to sell it. And so at town meeting, it was put before the voters, but it did not pass. So that's the history on that.
So we need a second at this point?
Yeah, we do need a second. I'll second.
You'll second?
Yep.
Okay.
The only thing I'll ask, just, I, I do, I did do some follow-up, um, with the Minnows who currently own that equipment that's on that property. They've been there for about eight and a half years. I know the Barons were there before that. The property's been maintained by the Barons for years as well as the Minnows since that point. I just think out of respect, give them some time and let them understand why that's happening, why that equipment needed to be removed. And then maybe consideration of the board, if we're not gonna do anything with that land, we can put that out for bid somewhere or.
We tried at town meeting, we didn't get permission. It was, it was turned down.
It was turned down.
Yeah, that's the big story behind that, Chris. What I did is that I knew that this, this equipment was on town property. Okay? Cause I had asked her if she knew where her town line was and when she came way over, this was last year, the beginning of last year, last summer, she had come way over to where the edge of the field was. And the minute she did that, I says, no, no, that your town line, your property line's on there.
Property line, yeah.
There's a street here and I know there's a street here. It's been there for years. It's never been developed. So I had to come over here and find it. So what I tried to do was go through the back door, try to purchase the property so nobody had to move nothing. Everybody stayed there. Then at one of the town voter selecting meetings or at the high school before you two were on the board, Lori Gaggen asked me, would you have a problem just separating the property? I said, no problem whatsoever. Okay, I'll take fifty percent. They can have the other fifty. Just pay me half of the survey cost, which cost me about fifteen hundred dollars to survey that street. Okay? The street's already surveyed. The pins are there. So I know exactly where the property line is. Okay? And, but when it went to the town meeting, some certain individuals at the town meeting, I was there, was in the back corner, I was watching it. They hemmed and hawed about it because it wasn't going out for bid. It's being sold to basically a budding neighbors. And she actually thought that I wanted the whole property, but we already had this discussion with Lori and she was, and Ms. Shannon was also informed by, I believe it was Jason, that no, it was gonna be split in half. Which I didn't have a problem with that, cause I didn't want the swing set to, to move out of there either. But right now, after that shit hit the fan at the meeting and everything went south, that was it. I, we don't have a choice. Okay? And, and there's only three abutting neighbors there. There's me that goes from Murray Street to twenty-fifth and then you have the Minnows and then you have Dayton, Canaan right behind them. That's the only three abutting neighbors there.
Okay. Well, you have a motion. We have a second. Any more discussion? Hearing done. All those in favor of the motion? Who's against? Motion carries. Send the letter out, the dimp, the time frame.
Okay, thank you.
Okay. Article ten, it's to consider a request for the Police and Control Department to transfer funds from the Sewer Undesignated Fund to purchase a new pump with a pump station located near Twin Rivers, Paper and Bridge Street. Rador?
Yes, um, I have a situation that's evolving into a crisis. Twin Rivers Pump Station handles about sixty-six percent of the town sewage for two-thirds. And we have to pump this down. We pulled it, we had an alarm. We responded to it. We pulled the pump out and we said, we thought, well, if we could get this repaired. Something jammed it that was quite significant. This is a twenty horsepower chopper pump. It's not your run-of-the-mill, go to Martin's or whatever to pick one up. It's significant. Anyway, when we took it, it's explosion-proof, so, uh, you know, Roger Electra can do a lot, but they're not certified to do explosions, so he trucked it on down to it and they said, you can't repair it. We need parts. So the crisis element of this is it's taking forever to get the parts. Uh, these are Haywood Gordons. Like I said, they're not, they're not a tip, run-of-the-mill kind of pump. So, um, we have parts on hand, but we also have the one that's there now running. Uh, we need to repair that as well. So the, the one that's down there is in a lot better shape than when we pulled it out. So what I'm requesting here is basically an insurance, if you will. If this was to, and the, the object that was of significance was a literal mop head. You know, you mop your floors, was in the sewer and this got caught up. So anyway, besides the point. So if we were to purchase this pump, we would always have one on hand. So if this event was to occur again, we wouldn't be, I mean, I haven't slept. I mean, I got one pump at one nervous. And if something happens to that, I really don't know what plan B is. It's, that's gonna be a tough situation. So, and the sad part about this, even if we were to order this, we're looking at fourteen to sixteen weeks out.
Sixteen to eighteen is the year.
But we haven't sat still. We have gone to local vendors, uh, cutting, I guess the cutter section of this. I went to Gary, uh, the welder there in Frenchville, and he believes he's able to do something with that. So depending on what's decided and what route we're gonna take, you know, we're not sitting still on it. We gotta, we gotta come up with plan B, C and D and what have you to get to that where it's a hundred percent again. But, uh, we've worked very hard in our department to save, uh, to build our undesignated fund for events like this. So I believe with the, the balance that's there, there's plenty of funds to support the purchase of this pump. And I respectfully ask that you approve it.
I make a motion to, to, uh, accept the request from the Police Department to transfer fines and purchase the pump.
I'll second that.
Second. Any more discussion? I have a question. It says shipping not included on your quote?
No, uh, it's gonna be trucked up. Uh, Roger, like I said, Roger's electric, uh, can't. Steve has been fantastic. Um, he's been very helpful in this process. And, uh, he trucked it down. He'll probably go get it. There may be a minimal fee or something.
Okay.
I'd be more willing to pay for that. But, yeah.
So I, I would just say that, uh, for further discussion, we probably want to consider, we have three pumps, main, three, four main pump stations, right? We have?
There, we have three, yeah. We have Twin Rivers, which is two-thirds. We have St. David is another third-ish, nah, about a quarter maybe of that. And of course it all pumps it to the main.
Yeah.
And then that pumps it to the plant.
And, and those all have two pumps, so one runs, the other one runs, one on the other? And I, I'd like to see if we can get ourselves to the point where we have a spare for each one of those because.
Station would make sense.
That would be nice. Yes, that would be fantastic if that is a possibility.
Agreed.
So that way, when one goes down, you still, you'll still always have two, right?
You always have your backup, your plan B.
It's more of a, a less an insurance policy, if you will.
Yeah.
The implications of that going to the river are much more than we, we're buying a pump.
And we, because of, we had that, uh, big deluge, uh, rain come down, we did do it. So I had to report that and ask for those without the one pump. So, uh, but yeah, here we are. So if you can approve it, thank you.
Any more discussion?
Oh, can we expand the discussion with, or is this not a good time to get on another agenda? What you just mentioned, possibly getting spares for the other stations?
Well, I think, I think you want to go out and get some quotes for the other ones and we'll bring it back for this board.
Yeah.
Yeah, yeah.
Good, thank you.
Right now we're looking at one. Okay. Any more discussion? Hearing done. All those in favor of the motion? Who's against? Motion carries.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
This is included, we need to sign this here?
So it's in there with our signatures? Are we gonna, are you gonna need that signature?
Yeah, I have, I have one here for.
Wait, it was signed after the meeting?
Yeah.
Okay. I just wanted to know. It was in there. I don't know if that was the one or. The other one is article eleven, to consider a UDAG loan write-off for the former Orchids LLC restaurant.
All right, so this is from one of our housekeeping exercise. Uh, we did have the sale of the, of the equipment, for the Orchids Restaurant that we held earlier this year. It was five thousand three hundred ninety-nine dollars. That was applied to the, uh, UDAG loan of, uh, Orchids LLC, which is no longer, uh, which is not a pump. So we would have to write off that balance of thirty-four thousand one hundred sixty dollars and eighty-eight cents to get that off our books. Otherwise, it shows, it'll always show up as receivable.
Right.
It's, it's not gonna go anywhere.
And it's not gonna go anywhere.
Guess lacking no other option. I'll make a motion that we, uh, write that off as.
I'll second that. Okay. The motion to write off the loan for former Orchids LLC, seconded by Jason.
Yeah.
Own. Any more discussion? Hearing done. All those in favor of the motion? Okay, motion carries.
Uh, I'll just need your signature on this before you leave.
Okay. To consider an application for a payment of property taxes on account five forty-four. Is that the one that had to do with tree growths?
Yeah, this one, there's one that kind of fell through the cracks here. This application came last year. And, uh, when the, typically April one is the deadline for accepting these applications like Homestead and all that. But under the, um, emergency, the state of Maine emergency for COVID, they extended those deadlines and he brought it in his application after April one, which he could. So my recommendation is that we go ahead and approve this, uh, this agreement. He has a street rule plan and submitted to the, uh, to the town. I have no issue with this.
I make a motion to accept.
I'll second.
Second. Move in favor. Any more discussion? Hearing done. All those in favor of the motion? Against, motion carries. Article thirteen, to consider a request by the Sewell Engineering Company to amend the work agreement for the Route One Sidewalk Project.
All right, so I'll give you a little bit of history on this. So Sidewalk project began, I learned it's back in twenty sixteen, uh, which is one side of the road. Which was fourteen that to sixteen that, because there's a long section on that side, on the south side of Main Street. There, there is no sidewalk here. But, you know, in talking with, you know, MDOT and boards and different boards that we've worked with over the years, uh, we've stated that project to do both sides of the road. So we're gonna replace the old by two minutes sidewalk curb on the north side of Main Street. And the sidewalk's gonna get done all the way down through both sides of the road. The project is expanded in scope by that action, but in doing that, uh, on the north side of Main Street, uh, there are no storm drains there. Uh, there's no storm drain system on the north side of Main Street, no curb drains. And so, um, you know, we moved forward with doing that project, knowing that if there's a time to put in the storm drains, it's, it's before you put in the sidewalks, right? And so, uh, we're, we're doing storm drains at the curbs. Sewell has been, um, taken on more work. And she's been having, they've been having a lot, uh, difficulty with the other utilities that have to move their assets there, like the telephone pole that I just discussed. Uh, they spent a lot of time and a lot of meetings, uh, getting, uh, the utilities on board to move their stuff. She's not done. She's still, uh, J. M. Nurtisit is still chasing down Consolidated and all the other, uh, communication companies that have, uh, infrastructure on the poles. So they're asking, uh, because of the expansion of scope of work and the amount of work that they've done above and beyond the original project, uh, to amend their contract agreement, uh, which would increase the price, uh, of twenty-one thousand six hundred eighty-eight dollars. I, I really, I don't have an objection to this. They've put a lot of work into it. And this is part of, and this contract is part of the overall cost of the project that's eighty-two, uh, seventy-five twenty-five by the state of Maine now. I gave you some correspondence, uh, in regards to, uh, that I've had with the state of Maine. We have one more step in the process right now. Uh, the state is gonna go to, um, the right-of-way process. The state is going to go to, um, the right-of-way process work. There's, there's different, um, benchmarks for how their projects get done. And, and there's one more left to do, uh, where the state of Maine is going to start their right-of-way work. They, uh, they're saying this is going to be a twenty twenty-two project now, uh, because the, the right-of-way work, uh, part of this is about nine months. And so real, realistically, even if they try to get it out next year, it wouldn't be before the fall. And that's not a good time to start these projects. So, um, and of course, with what's going on with, with, uh, COVID and what it's doing to pricing and availability contractors and all the work that's out there, uh, they keep adjusting their opinion of probable cost, which was a big concern to me. I made a request to MDOT, um, under the initial project, uh, of seventy-five twenty-five. They paid seventy-five percent of the project up to four hundred thousand dollars and anything above four hundred was all in the town. And so all of a sudden, here we are, you know, my, my communication to them was, um, just on March nine, and this is just an opinion probable cost, based on what they're seeing for bids coming in and contractor rates, they have a way to gauge that. In March, they were at five thirty-four nine ninety-nine, uh, now they're at six seventy-six, one eighty-six, with an increase of about a hundred forty-one thousand dollars. And that, for me, was a big flag. I asked them to, I requested that they pick up, uh, eighty twenty of the increases. Uh, they came back and they said that they have removed the cap to four hundred, they'll pay eighty twenty of the whole project. So that's going to be a significant, uh, part, I should say, that's a typo there, it's seventy-five twenty-five.
Right.
So that's a significant commitment by the state to agree to pick up that extra cost, uh, for us. So again, uh, the sidewalk, uh, the engineering of the project, um, you know, there's been a lot of changes. There's a lot of storm drain work that needed to be done, a lot of engineering for that. And they're requesting that we amend their contract. I would support it strongly.
We had a plan in place for that funding in our budget process. This is going to throw us off probably.
Well, we have approved the reserves at the town meeting.
Yeah, that's what I don't, we made a.
We have.
It may make the, was that your one and what?
Uh, we've been putting, we've been softening money away for, for a few years now. And our, and our goal was, we were going to have one more installment.
Right.
To fully fund our share, but we're going to have two more this year opportunities to fund our share.
Okay, that's what I was getting at, we're not going to have to do it all in one.
Twenty twenty-two.
Okay.
Yeah, right. Me have to go an extra year there to, to pick up the extra cost of this.
I'll make a motion, we amended to cover the additional cost, I mean, it's beyond our control at this point.
Yeah.
I think it's reasonable.
I'll second that.
Second that. Any more discussion? Hearing done, all those in favor of the motion? Those against, motion carries. Article fourteen. Is to consider proposal from Consolidated Communications to provide internet carrier services to the towns municipal buildings.
I'm going to defer to Jason, who so kindly offered to put, to really hook into this. This is right up his wheelhouse and he asked me if, uh, if I was okay with him taking the lead and, and doing some research as he by all means go forth. So Jason's got some numbers to put in front of me.
Okay, so after we finish the fact-saving project, we would move on to looking at our internet services throughout the town. And they try to find a, some sort of cost-saving method to, to, to save some money. Right now, on average, we're paying about a hundred and fifty dollars, um, per building to provide internet for the building. And it varies depending on which building it is, because the recreation department with the trade show has faster internet. Fire department has faster internet, because the police department uploads videos to, to the state. So each building has their own requirements. After contacting Consolidated to discuss the internet part of things, um, they were able to offer us a few different options, a few different plans. And you can see that in the packet that we have here. The one that we're looking at, or that I would recommend out of all these, and I'll explain why, um, is each building right now has about, if you look at, the internet is broken down into how, how fast you can upload things and how fast you can download things, okay? Right now, the fastest provider we have here in town is at the rec department. They're at, uh, two hundred down and about thirty-five up. Okay, and the upload is, is really the, the major part of things. Uh, Consolidated is able to offer us two hundred megs download and two hundred megs upload. The upload is that big cap that we're having right now with our system at, um, two hundred ninety-seven dollars and six cents per month. Okay? So it's, it's slightly more than one internet connection that we currently have now at a single building. But this will also allow us to launch a project that we can take that one single internet service and push it to every building in town. So our only monthly bill would be that two hundred ninety-seven oh six for the internet. And there would be a one-time cost per building to get that building connected to this wireless network that we would create in town. So the second document you have here, um, lists the potential cost for each building to get it on to this wireless network. So the nice part about this is it can be done one building at a time. So we don't have to go through there and say, let's cancel all our internet services and, and let's move to this. There is no annual contract on, on this, um, service that we have here, uh, except for the three-year, um, requirement. You also need to have at least two copper lines, which the town already has. So that basically takes care of that. So the, the base station would basically be at the public safety building. Uh, and the reason for that is by evaluating the bandwidth usage at each location, uh, the public, uh, safety building has the most upload. Again, you're talking in-car camera video footage as well as body camera footage that they're constantly uploading, uploading on a day-to-day basis. Uh, the other thing I looked at is the essential phones, um, because again, right now, we have our phones going through the internet. If you look at the internet service here at the town office, you're looking at about five megs upload that they have. So your internet and your phone are all going through a five meg upload. And then each of the current buildings in town are all, the phone systems there all connect to the town office, um, for the, for the main, the main switch for the phone. So when you pick up the phone at one building, you're using the upload internet from there to come to here, goes through the download to get into this building, and then the upload from here to get out. So, uh, we're saturating that internet. We actually have dropped phone calls, uh, we have people calling in sometimes, don't get connected because, um, the service is poor. This wireless system here, uh, would provide up to one gigabit of service from one building to the next. That's a thousand megs both ways, okay? So that would allow the phone system to work flawlessly across all the buildings, um, including, you know, the public, uh, public works and the pollution control buildings as well. Um, if we want to put VoIP at, at those locations. So the cost of, um, if you take, for example, I'm going to use this, the simple numbers of rounding a hundred fifty dollars a month, um, times, I'm going to use four buildings, um, which is what's in this proposal here, you're looking at six hundred dollars a month for internet, multiply that by twelve, you're looking at seven thousand two hundred dollars, um, a year, right? Give or take that we're spending on internet. The total cost of this project to get all the buildings, and that includes the town sign, um, which on some months, I know we've been in the three hundred dollar range, uh, you're looking at fifty-five hundred and twenty-eight dollars for the whole project, and that's a one-time fee. So just in your first year of implementing the system and getting rid of internet at, at the other buildings, you're already going to have a savings in that first year. In the second year, you're going to have an upwards of five thousand dollars a year of savings just by going with this system here. Uh, it also gives the town the ability to expand the services. For example, if we have a park, I'll take Bicentennial Park, for example, where we're having issues with vandalism, okay, which we've seen in the past. For a simple four hundred dollars, we can buy a, a camera system package that works on our wireless network and put cameras inside of this park. And then if we have issues at another location, that camera system can then be moved to another park and all be wireless through our system in the town. So it allows the police department to monitor some of these locations for vandalism and other issues going on in town, without having to buy an extra internet fee for that location and pay an extra monthly fee. So it kind of gets us away from this internet connection at each location and kind of puts everything into one network. What that also does, it allows us to secure all the buildings. Right now, somebody can very easily hack into, you know, it's a regular modem right at the rec department. Somebody can easily hack into that and get right into the rec department. Somebody can hack into the modem at the fire department and get into, it's just a simple modem. Um, this here provides a, a pro router at, at the central office, and everything is inside of one network. The only method of penetration is that one connection at the public safety building, which would then in turn have a router and a firewall that we don't have right now in our network. So it keeps everything internal, the phone calls internal, the internet's internal, everything is internal until that one outside point. So it, it leaves less points of failure.
So the equipment becomes ours at that point?
So the equipment is ours, yes. This is a one-time cost, the equipment is ours. So if, for example, you know, we get rid of the town garage, which it'll, should never happen, that equipment can still be used somewhere else. You know what I mean? It's, it's not, you know, we're not leasing it or anything like that.
What about the campground at the port landing?
So that's one thing that, after I put this proposal together, Gary talked about, and that is, uh, available as well. So you can put a, a wireless system right there. You can also include in there, putting a wireless access point, so you can actually provide wireless internet to the folks who are there on their phones. Okay, and that also allows you to put a camera at the campground, so that can be, you know, supervised by the police department. So it, it opens up a lot of opportunity in the town for us to, to expand this project and.
Well, I think that the campground would, would benefit by, I mean, one of the things that is, is makes, is, uh, campground not salable is the fact that there's no wifi.
Yeah, correct.
Poor cellphone signal there, so people don't have that connectivity. And so if we had wifi down there, I think we would fill up our campground pretty quickly, every single year.
So never went completely.
And, and the nice part about the system is, let's say, for example, we have a huge storm here in town and a tree falls, hits the town office, and this dish that you put on the roof gets knocked over. It's as simple as the maintenance person for the town climbing the ladder, taking the dish and, and repointing it. It's not equipment that needs to be serviced or aimed or done anything by a professional company. It's all stuff that's very easy to do in, in-house. I mean, if you can work a nut and a bolt and, and move a dish yourself, it's very, very easy to, to maintain.
This is a equipment that has to be purchased? Is that the only option that we have? We have to buy that, this equipment?
So this is the equipment that is needed to do that, yes.
But I mean, buying it is the only option?
Yes, yeah, there's no locations that'll rent you the, uh.
Right.
Yeah. The only other thing you can do is you can get a, a third party, um, I believe Pioneer Wireless used to do it, but then you're stuck paying that monthly fee and the equipment fee to have it on, on your building. I'm not sure if they still offer services, but we're trying to get away from that monthly fee by purchasing the equipment ourselves and, and maintaining the system ourselves.
But that's got a life also.
It does, yeah.
Does this, doesn't this school have some, some capabilities like that, that, that there are?
Yep. So for the school's phone system, they're doing that right now. So they've got, they're using the tower up on Eleventh Ave. They've got a, a station set up there, and they're point-to-point from the elementary school and the, uh, the high school. So I, I actually spoke with Paul Shassie at the school department while doing this, and we worked on it together to make sure that all the needs of the town would be satisfied with this equipment.
So why can't we just piggyback off of them?
I don't think, uh, I don't think that's going to be very easy. What happens is the school is on its own special network, so they have some school filters, they have a lot more.
They're on the third line.
Yeah, yeah, they've got a lot more security on their network, and to allow another entity onto their network would be quite.
No, the state wouldn't allow it.
Yeah.
Schools and libraries.
So, yeah, so these are not the traditional dishes, like you see a satellite dish that's a curved dish. This is actually like a rounded outside dish, so the snow can't accumulate, and it's pointing straight out, it's not pointing up. So there's no snow that accumulates on it, uh, yeah.
So move forward with this, how would you, how you, how would you fund this, this project? When would it happen and, like, when did you realize?
Well, we would be funded by the savings.
Based off it's.
Yeah, payback is supposed to be a year and a half?
Yeah, in your first year, by the end of your first year, you've paid it off. You know what I mean?
So the money, the money comes from the, it's the budget line for, for.
Yeah.
So I don't think you're, you're not having to raise any money or go into any reserve accounts, you're, you're just going to pay for it from, you know, if you would move forward from that expense line in our budget.
Right.
Just to make it happen.
Just to make it happen.
And it's a, I mean, what are we talking for a turnaround? If, if you agree, if you say we're going to do that, when does it go into, when is it up and running? You know what I mean?
I would, I would say slower than you would expect, because we don't want to do this to every building in, in two days. It could be done. I would say, uh, let's get the, you know, get the central system set up at the fire station, let's get one building going, make sure this connection is secure, and then do a timed, timed rollout. Do the next building after that, do the town office, do the public work, do one building at a time.
Fall off in a series of.
Right, just to ensure that we're not putting, you know, because this, a lot of this work is going to be done right by, uh, could be done by Gerald, you know? Single cable needs to be run from where the internet comes in now to the dish that's going to be outside.
Yeah.
So you're talking, you know, a couple of days of work for him to do that and, uh, which is why you don't see any labor on here, is because it, it can all be done internally by, by Gerald. So all the equipment can be purchased at once, um, to get the discount, you know, because if you purchase it separately, the price goes up every time. A lot of this equipment, you know.
But bring it online in, in phases.
In phases, right, right.
Just so you don't have, you're not troubleshooting every single, every single facility.
Exactly, yeah. And the biggest thing I think is the, is the phone system. If you talk to anybody in town, you know, uh, here at the town office, it's not so bad, because you're right here in the central location, but some of the other locations. Um, at Public Works, I mean, this would increase your internet speed by tenfold and, and your phone service by tenfold, you know?
I did check to see what sort of commitment we had with, uh, Spectrum.
Yep.
And, and so we, we got a static IP in that service, that subscription back in twenty seventeen, and it's a month by month. There's no long-term commitment of that.
Yep.
You know, we've been issuing this, um, for as long as I've been on the board, and it's been a consideration and, and, and a cost that we really couldn't, couldn't understand for, for some time. And, and I think this is, this is a viable, um, answer at this point.
I, I think you've done a great amount of work.
Is there anybody else using this in town? Anyone that's supposed to be doing this in town?
Uh, just the school department. Yeah.
And it works good.
It works good, yeah. I actually am in the process right now personally of installing the exact same system, um, to set up some wireless cameras for the bridge project. So it's going to be a time-lapse camera system that'll take pictures every few seconds, and it's using this technology, and it's been running awesome, so.
Okay, before we move forward, uh, I, I'll need a motion to continue the meeting, because we reached, there are two hours.
I'll make a motion here.
Second. Okay, motion.
Yeah.
By Chris, second by, okay, you got that? Good. Any more discussion? Hearing done, all those in favor of the motion? Continue, Jason?
So I guess the biggest question to the, to the board is, do we want to purchase all the equipment at once? Or do we want to purchase the equipment on a per-building basis as we roll it out?
I'm going to make a motion that we move forward with the project, we ba, we, we purchased equipment all at once. I believe you mentioned there was a discount.
Yeah.
Based off getting the equipment, you roll it out in phases. I mean, I, I think, leave it up to, I mean, I don't know if you worked out how that would lay itself out, but to me, I mean, I guess it makes sense going forward. It's a pretty significant savings over the long term, so, and like you say, we've been dealing with this, and I know sitting on the finance committee, we've dealt with it the past couple of years, so to me, it's a no-brainer.
The only thing I would say is that, you know, the, um, you have a somewhat of a contractual agreement with, with Consolidated that you need to approve, I, uh, as part of that motion.
Yeah, so that's a three-year commitment on that, that has to be part of that, huh?
Yes.
Which is typical, so I'll amend that to move forward with the three-year commitment from Consolidated on their services, purchasing the equipment at the same time and then breaking it out into phases, um, starting with fire department.
I'll second that.
Okay, so more, real quick on discussion part of this. So, uh, before I forget to mention it, uh, there is a thirty-day, uh, install time for Consolidated to get this connection in. But with that said, we can still start installing the soft, the, the equipment, and we can still, like, for example, the rec department, launch the rec department on the top, the, uh, fire department's current internet connection, okay? It can handle another, an additional two buildings to it. So by the time we get the third and fourth and fifth building on, Consolidated will be in place to take over that extra bandwidth that we need. So we can start the project even though it's a thirty-day wait for the consolidation.
We give a motion by Chris, second by Doug. Any more discussion? Hearing done, all those in favor of the motion? Those against, motion carries. Article fifteen is to consider the town delegate annual meeting voting delegates for matter of law. And that has to do with the MMA convention?
Yes, so MMA convention, uh, every year, uh, the annual convention, uh, they have their annual, annual business meeting, and, uh, you, uh, municipal officers have to appoint the voting delegates. Typically, it's the town manager and whether the, who does any of the alternating is, uh, the designated alternate would be. So I'll, I'm going to be there, Denise is going, uh, and if there's anybody here from the board that's interested in going to convention, it's September twenty-nine, uh, till October one. So Thursday, Friday, two days. Let me know, maybe we'll register you to go, uh, to convention if you'd want to go.
I am unable to make that.
Me, that I fly out October first.
Me either. I fly out October first, so I can't.
Not around.
Hearing none? What do we need for a motion here?
Uh, you would need to designate me as the, uh, voting delegate and if nobody else is going, Denise could, could be an alternate, uh,
Okay.
delegate, voting delegate.
Is there a motion for that?
I'll make a motion to approve Gary and Denise as the.
As the official, and Denise as the alternate?
Yep.
I'll second that.
The town of Manawaska, okay, seconded by Chris. Any more discussion?
Any reason why we can't make Denise the first and make Gary?
I'm a motion now.
Them fighting words.
Denise, what do you have to say about that? I'm, I'll, I'll say back.
You heard the butter today.
There's no discussion. All those in favor of the motion? Who's against, motion carries. Article sixteen is to consider the state of Maine general assistance dependencies from eight through eight for the October first, twenty-one to September, uh, through September thirty, twenty twenty-two. And those are the, actually mandatory updates or?
These are just mandatory updates every year. The, uh, the appendices are what basically are the, uh, the maxims, what.
The guidelines.
Things, the guidelines, and those get adjusted, uh, they, they can be adjusted from year to year. So, uh, it's pretty much of our standard.
I'll make a motion we approve the Maine general assistance append.
I'll second that.
Seconded by Jason. Any more discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor of the motion? Who's against, motion carries. Article seventeen is to consider the town of Manawaska winter sand bids for twenty twenty-one.
So we, uh, we did put a bid out, out in the, uh, St. John Valley, we received one bid, which is the Bertha Diad of Frenchville. Um, he provided us winter sand last year.
I had two years ago.
Two years ago. We didn't buy any last year.
Last year was, uh, interior.
Oh, that's right, that's right. And so, uh, this year we're receiving one bid, um, Kevin?
We received one bid, uh, for, uh, four dollars a yard for a three-quarter inch and if he delivers it, it would be seven seventy-five. There's an extra three seventy-five a yard to deliver.
What you've done in the past?
We usually go pick it.
Yeah.
We put, uh, three or four trucks for a couple of days and we all did, we set it the same down.
That's feasible to do?
Oh, yeah.
Yeah.
What's, how many yards are you looking at?
A thousand.
Thousand yards.
We have the, last year, uh, our driver, Delik, tried something a little different and we saved probably thirty percent of our sand, so our shed is still almost half.
Oh, really?
Nice.
Nice job. Plus we have a pile outside, so. Yeah. So with a thousand, you should have been.
It just kinda gets you guys up to speed. So in the past, the town used to, uh, take a lot of river dredge.
Yes.
Uh, and screen our own. Uh, but that was a pretty costly thing to do. Uh, we had to pay to use the access road to get down there and that was based on the number of times, I mean, that was hauled out of there, uh, with the big trucks to haul. Uh, we had to fix the road that, you know, to go in and coming out. Uh, and then wear and tear on the vehicles and stuff like that. So I think it's actually more cost-effective to do it this way than continue to go back to the river, um, take sand out.
We had did a, a, a cost estimate a couple of years ago and I think that said and done, with the winter sand mixed and in the pile, it was four or five dollars a yard of cost savings by doing it this way.
Wow.
So if you figure out what we buy in town and what we buy out of town, this, so we were able to convert last year over three-quarters of the town to salt and there wasn't much of a cost difference.
Good.
And it's a lot less cleaning in the springtime. We saved the week and a week and a half cleanup and wear and tear.
I mean, I'll make a motion we accept the bid that's proposed, whether, I mean, there's not another option.
And do our own hauling?
Do our own hauling.
I second that.
Seconded by Jason. Any more discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor of the motion? Who's against, motion carries. Need a motion to adjourn and our next meeting will be October five? Okay, so May five is fine, yeah?
Yeah, we have a.
Yeah, I'll second, yeah.
Okay, officially. Ooh, that wasn't too bad. I said, yes.
Went down real fast?
I said, yes, and I said, do you have a taxation? Yeah, I did.
Good luck, man.
Take care.
Good too.
Thanks.